Hello there. Started the recording. So don't say anything weird. Hi guys.
Hey Tim.
So we got Rob and Mike.
John and Dennis.
And me. I think Adam's gonna join, but I'm not sure when. John, introduce yourself.
I am John Lenhart. I um, my background, when I came out of college, I worked for consumer products companies making uh, detergents, formulating Dawn Joy, Liquid Tide, things like that. Ended up working in a school system when I learned a bunch of these uh, leadership principles and helping these kids and these teachers. And then, two years ago, met Bill Bellows and uh, been learning that a lot of stuff I had been doing my whole career was already, done by Acoff and Deming. So now I'm learning uh, kind of the words, putting the right words to what I've been doing in the past.
Thanks John. Rob, introduce yourself.
Sure. Um, and by the way, uh, Tim, I think you need to mute one of the two things. That's my guess. There's a bunch of echo.
We've tried that, but the iPhone doesn't go to zero.
Let's see, so uh, John, what John just said, uh, that actually resonates pretty well with me because I really didn't uh, dig into Dr. Deming's work, uh, really, in earnest until the last two years, um, to discover uh, words to put behind, a lot of the stuff that I've been doing in the software space for the last twenty-five years. So um, uh, but I'm a software engineer, still, still practicing software and uh, leading teams, working with teams, that sort of thing, uh, and excited to meet, all of you, perhaps in person in a few weeks, so.
Dennis, introduce yourself.
Hi, I'm Dennis Golic. Um, I've, worked, I currently work with uh, Bill Bellows. We teach at Cal State Northridge. Uh, we've been doing it for seven years. And um, I've been involved with Deming since the eighties, in one way, shape or form.
Well, you guys have a long class.
Well, the, my, my class just ended last week, so uh, um, we have off for the summer, then they start up again in September.
All right. Mike, introduce yourself.
Uh, good evening, everybody. Uh, I've been um, involved with Deming since nineteen eighty-four. That's the uh, date I went to my first four-day seminar. And uh, had a career at General Motors, uh, was able to work with Deming. Uh, worked at Toyota for about six years, looked, learned how they've applied Deming and then, had a career in industry, some consulting. Uh, presently retired with uh, some projects uh, here and there, but mostly retired.
Adam, I think you just joined. Introduce yourself. We've got John online who hasn't been online before.
Okay, hello, I'm uh, Adam Pirella. I've been uh, working with Tim for about two years now. This is my first time going through the uh, Deming book.
Thanks. He also is a survivor of a nasty fire in Eaton. So, we're looking at chapters five and six. I always found it intriguing, the Deming picked as a leader, Morris Hanson. Anybody know Morris Hanson before reading this book?
Nope.
I suppose he chose Morris.
Uh, for me, it would just be guesses, but uh, it does seem like some of their back, right? The University of Wat- Wyoming. Uh, seems like some of their background, process paths. That and, and being involved in the census.
Yeah, I think he knew Morris in some way, so that probably influenced him. What else do you think? Of course, we can't know, but what do you think influenced him?
Well, he was big in, in statistics and sampling and uh, obviously the Census Bureau. So I think um, how he, his leadership and how he, he worked with the US Census Bureau, I think that was a big thing.
I, I also think if Morris is a person who fit his four steps here, theory, motivation, practical plan and persuasive. Uh, it almost feels like he admired Morris to being able to exhibit all four of those.
That's a good observation. Yeah. It's an indication of what he's been saying, that managers and leaders are different. Leadership is one thing, anybody can be a leader. Management's another, that's a job assignment. And the organization has given you authority to go with that. Morris didn't have any authority.
But Tim, Tim, let, I, I, let's go back to something you said, anyone can be a leader. That's not true, that's not true, that's not true.
Anyone that has those four characteristics.
Well, Dennis, Dennis, what's your definition of leader?
Uh, that, we could go on forever and ever on that, but to say that anyone can be a leader, I know, I, I know more people that are not leaders than that are leaders.
I, I'm gonna agree with Tim on this. I think anyone can be a leader if they have the right definition. And this is what I do in the schools. I have, I have, you know, pre-teens being leaders, they're teachers. Because if you get the right definition.
I agree.
Do it. So what's your definition, Dennis?
What, no, no, no. I, I agree that teenagers can be, that doesn't mean everyone can be.
I, literally, I can make anybody a leader. I, now, I can do it.
All right, then, then I, then I, then I will.
It's, it's all on the definition. What's your definition of leader?
I will, I will, I, I don't have a concise one, but I will give it, if you, if you guys think that it is, I will go with, with the crowd on that one.
My definition is a person who facilitates the purpose and progress of another. A person who facilitates their own purpose and progress at the expense of another is a boss. There is no such thing as a servant leader. Because you'd have to explain what a non-servant leader is. A leader by definition, the effect is they're a servant. And when I teach kids, you can be a lead, everybody can be a leader because everybody can facilitate the purpose and progress of another. So one of the things I say is, is leaders love being led, bosses hate being bossed. There can only be one boss. But everybody can be a leader. And I think Tim used the word can be.
Yeah, it's, I, I agree with that. I disagree with that. And I just also disagree with uh, your concept of servant leadership. But anyway, let's, we can get back to the Deming thing. So those are just two things that, you know, of many things we can discuss later on. But definitely, I disagree also on the servant leadership thing.
What do you disagree about that? Because I'm saying that I don't believe in servant leadership.
And I do.
That a leader, so what is non-servant leadership? Could you explain to me what non-servant leadership is?
Uh, uh, again, it, we have to go back into what is leadership and agree into that and so forth. Anyway, let's just, we can go back in the back, we can get to this later on. I, I understand what you're saying, John. I just, I just disagree with it.
What I find interesting is, in even a Deming-run organization, people are both leaders and followers. And sometimes, at the same moment, what you are doing is leading one section of the organization at the same time you're following another. They don't always do one thing or the other. Especially, you consider what Deming talks about, inner relationships and systems, and uses an orchestra as an example. All hundred and thirty people in the orchestra are there to help the others. When they're helping the others, they're leaders. But they're also there to follow the script, in this case, the score. I think it's fascinating that, that we have made, Russ, Russ Acoff does a good job of separating administration, management and leadership. His definitions have to do with who's doing what. Um, and, and by what means. I think I can find it here. Or maybe I can't. Let's see, if I can find Russ. Uh, somewhere here is Russ. I have three devices running, so. And I'm easily confused. I don't see it, so I'll send it off to you. I think it's part of the article on transformational leadership that Russ wrote. And I find, he found the distinctions between administration, management and leadership useful. So I also have always been fascinated that in the, with everybody so concerned about leadership, Deming certainly concerned about it. We've got the shortest chapter in the book is on leadership. Doesn't have to be long to be useful. How about the next chapter is management of people? So.
Wait, wait, before, before we go that, let's, let's go back to, you know, since it is short, let's make sure we cover it. Um, again, since the pages are, are, you know, different depending on your addition and everything, uh, at, at the, you know, his leadership chapter five, uh, on the first page, he goes, what is a leader? And he goes into, a leader is to accomplish transformation of his or, of its organization. So I think that, you know, it possesses its knowledge, personality and persuasive power. I think that's probably, as I look, went through this, I, I have this marked on the side as the most important part of this, of this chapter. Um, what, what's your thoughts on that? Like especially the, you know, he, he continues on with transformation.
I, I think, I highlighted, um, first of all, it's the job of a leader is, so.
Yep.
It's not really the leader, it's the job and those are attributes. To me, the end of the third paragraph, I said was the most important thing, is he understands people. And that was kind of the email I wrote about, is like, if you don't understand people are unique, then you treat them all like robots. And then you deny their intrinsic motivation. And then it's all over. So to me, the number one thing about a leader is, does he understand individuals?
So if we're, if we're looking at that, in a, you know, in a G, a company with G with, with hundreds of thousands of people, he can't obviously understand all people, so you understand types of people or, so explain more when you get to large organizations.
Wha- what about, you, it, every situation is a person-by-person issue.
Right, but if, if I'm in, if I'm in, you know, if I'm in my, you know, CEO meeting and I have fifteen people in the room, and, you know, some of them are new, some are old, some are, you know, so forth and so on. You can understand people to some degree, but some much better than others. And some you might not even understand what their motivation is. And so, that, that's what I want to get into is, what does Deming think about the transformation and uh, understanding people? Because you can't under, you know, there's so many things you can't understand. So what is it that you can understand?
Yeah, so if you look at this chapter, really, there's basically a page of explanation and the rest of the chapter is a story.
Right.
So really, if you take the story out, he really didn't explain leadership. He went to a, a story. Acoff, one of my favorite books is the Art of Problem Solving. And basically, ten percent of that book is him talking directly. And ninety percent of that book is him telling stories because he can't explain it directly. And so Deming in this chapter did this. The next chapter, he, he feels like I can get more specific, but this one, I think he had trouble outlining it. So, so I will tell the story. So one of the times, because what I do is I build generative communities. So one of the uh, organizations, I was helping an American football team. I was helping a college football team, the defensive coach. Now, think about the defensive coach, coaches, six position coaches, and they have sixty players. And so this coach wants, and, and I say, if ten guys do their job on defense, what's the result? A touchdown. Because all eleven gotta be doing, it's a total system. When you look at a defense on a football team, it's completely a system. Every part's gotta do their part and they gotta interact with every other part, right? This team was number seventieth in the nation in scoring defense. And when he asked me to help him, I said to him, you coach coaches and your coaches coach players. Your information, what you have in your head, you have to communicate through these people to get to the players. The problem is, is what you say goes through people and each person is unique. And they turn the message and what gets to the players is something different. If you understood the intrinsic motivation of your six coaches, then what, how you talk to them, if you adjusted for that, what got through them would be exactly the right thing. So he took two hours, identified the intrinsic motivation of the six coaches. He talked, learned to talk to them like that. They finished sixth in the nation in scoring defense, finished in the top twenty that year. And, and he got recruited away to a SEC school from there. So he is basically coaching the Division III football team, and now he's coaching the SEC school. So that's what, it's like, what is the layer you're interacting with? That head guy is coaching, he's coaching coaches. So does he understand the intrinsic motivation of the people that he is actually interacting with?
I expect a manager to understand as best he can, the people who report directly to him. In an organization like NASA or Dachadi, it's many thousands of people asking the top guy or top gal to understand everybody in the organization makes no sense. You're looking through others.
But it's systems, you know, you guys talked about this in previous one. There's a, a company has all these different systems at different levels. So the head person has, is a part of a system, and those people are part of a system. And it's like, are you understanding your, each system you're in? And the people you interact with? Because if you do that right, every, it, it's literally what's in the next chapter, it literally unlocks. And this, this is giving me my speaking, speech at end to end. I hope I see all, everybody at end to end. And whether you come to my speech or not, the psychology portion of the system profound knowledge, if we would take that three-dimensional, it, you would unlock the value of intrinsic motivation. And there is an intentional way to do it. I've done it in corporations, I've done it in schools, it's even tougher. I have school teachers that finish the school year with more energy than they began. And I have teachers that are able to reach kids who are emotional behavioral disorder with diagnosed mental issues and get them out of special ed to regular ed. And it all starts with understanding their intrinsic motivation. So I'm, you know, I can sit here and talk about business, but you, you will never meet an employee worse than a kid who's got emotional behavioral disorder with diagnosed mental issues. Unless, you know, Dennis, you've had one of your teachers defecate, or one of your students defecate on your desk. You're never gonna beat a student or an employee worse than these teachers have with these kids. And we handle all of that with words, not touching them. And it's all through the intrinsic motivation. So yeah, that's, that's what I would say, is I think it is possible to understand a person's intrinsic motivation intentionally.
Uh, I, you know, I agree with that, but if, if you're looking at, so going back to my original objection, um, anyone can be a leader. Not everyone can be a leader of uh, of a company. Not everyone can be a leader of a division, of a department and so forth. I don't care what, I don't care what you do and how you do it. I've, I've worked with, with Fortune Hundred companies, I've worked with, with small companies, I've worked with schools. I've never seen that certain people just can't do things, no matter what you can do for it.
Right, but be a leader, the question was leader is one thing, but be a leader of these certain positions, you're right. Not everybody can do it, but here's the question, does everybody want to do it?
Even if you, of course, of course, one of people want to do it because it's prestige, da-da-da. That doesn't mean they can do it. And, you know, uh, we're just looking at the statistics, um, since nineteen ninety, only a hundred and forty-eight companies are still, that were in the Fortune Five Hundred are still there. They just weren't run well. They weren't led well. And no matter who, you know, so that's why I'm not, I, I just don't think that everyone can be transformational, um, in the transformation of a company. I think.
Well, I agree.
Well, that's what Deming is talking about, is he's talking about the be able to transform, transformation in any organization will take place under a leader. Not everyone can do that.
I, I agree, not everybody could do that, but the, but it isn't gonna happen without a leader.
Uh, I agree, but not everyone can be a leader. That's all I'm saying.
Okay, so, a leader of a transformational organization, right, but originally, I believe everybody can be a leader. But whether they can be a leader of a transformational organization, oh yeah, I, I don't believe everybody.
I would offer, we have to be careful about deciding that the guys in charge of the organization are leaders. Some of them might be, others probably not.
I agree.
I, I think Deming is offering us that a leader is somebody with an idea who can explain it easily and get others to join him. Whether it's in an organization or on a playground.
I agree, but it's, but it's not, whether it's the number one person or not, an organization is not gonna transform without somebody bringing that energy in.
Exactly.
It's not gonna happen.
So, so before we move, move on, Rob and, and Mike, we haven't heard you two. Yeah, because again, this is only, there's only one page, you know, and then a story, then we, then we can move on to manage, you know, number six, management of people. What are your, your views on the leadership before we move on?
I think uh, the, the message is everyone can be a leader in some capacity in, in the position one up from where they are within the, within the uh, team on which they're playing now. Uh, I, I think that's what I take away from that. The, the concept of leadership is having the bigger uh, uh, good of the group you're in at heart, rather than your own self-interest.
So, so Mike, let's look at, again, Toyota team leads, six to eight people, you and I've worked with that. Not everyone on a team can be a team lead. Not everyone can, so again, how do we bring this concept of leadership to even a small, you know, the beginning part of an organization?
I think it's in uh, the daily work and the, the contribution to problem solving when problems come up. Being a, a source of ideas. That's leadership from the perspective of the guy who's doing the job, I think. Being caring about the, about the outcome.
Yep, yep, yep. What about you, Rob?
Yeah, so the, the thing that I would appreciate about the uh, by using Hanson as the example, is that it's not stating like he's not the top of the organization, that, that he's being a leader from within the organization and uh, influencing broadly, right? So not even just in his role, but uh, but, but further, and presumably uh, he's also doing some of this, right? It's um, has not just knowledge, but personality and persuasive power. Um, so uh, yeah, a short chapter, but in reading the story, um, that was helping me relate how, it's not just about the guy at the top, because right, I think probably all of us have seen, the guy at the top is not really what I would consider a leader.
Let's ask the guy.
Wouldn't fit this definition of leader anyway.
Let's ask the guy with the least experience with Deming. Adam, what do you think?
I think, is Adam still here?
I don't, yeah, I don't see Adam as on.
Oh, we got. That happened last week too, he had to leave for some reason. Okay. Guess we don't, we'll get anything, info from the, out of sight, people are telling me. Some of us are not as smart as we used to be. It's kind of what happens when you read Deming, you thought you were smart, then you read this and said, what the heck is I doing all those years? So, what about management of people? I found figure ten, I've always found it fascinating. Say how everybody's bound with curiosity, giant money, dignity, all of those things. And they managed to crush it out of them. And I taught school for eight years. And I saw a lot of this crushing out any desire for learning.
No, I forget, does he refer to in here, at least in my head, and maybe it's because I live in the US, that uh, my assumption is that he's referring to in the West, or in, in this Western style of leadership. Or, or do we think that every culture does this?
I think, Rob, you got it right. I think this is a, an American, Western civilization-based point of view, uh, addressing the leaders in that, in that context.
Yeah. I think it's Western, but I don't think it's limited to the US. It's, that's my, that's my push, but it's like residual, like the industrial revolution setting everything up as if it's mechanistic. Like separating into three different organizations, if you will, something that used to happen naturally and automatically altogether. There's a place where you work. And you don't learn and you don't have fun. There's a place where you learn. But you're not working and you're not having fun. And there's a place where you play, where you're not working and you're not learning. Before industrial revolution, that all happened in one thing. Kind of organically as you grew up.
It feels hard to hard to know that. Like that it would have come from the industrial revolution, like, I don't know, I feel like there should be examples, say in Roman times where this was true. Or maybe that's just Western movies leading in that direction.
I'm not sure, but the Russians, I mean, the Romans founded the Western civilization. That they didn't go through an industrial revolution.
Yeah, I think what I was, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I I was gonna say, education was only for the rich and aristocracy at that time as well, so most folks were peasants or slaves. Yeah, I I think you're on to something, Tim, as far as uh the purpose of education for a period of time in the twentieth century, early twentieth century especially. Was to get people ready for jobs in the mill and in the factory. Uh, and if they're docile and follow directions, well, that's a good thing based on the style of management that was prevalent, so. I think that's pretty good uh assessment of uh how how education got the way it is.
As I recall. European colleges is used to be awarding degrees on on honors on people without grading them. But sometime in the nineteen hundreds. Grading became a thing that needed to happen. And getting that up is very difficult, even though we managed to educate the elite. Mostly without handing out grades. So it's certainly not a necessary condition for learning. I had teachers, I my sons, I went to a school. Can't remember her name. I know some lady in the kind of the school, recently Santa Bed was classized. The first two years, they didn't get grades, they they gave assignments and they gave feedback on the assignments. Starting in third grade, they they gave grades, A, B, C, D. So I asked his teachers, what? And a child's development happens between second and third grade. It makes grading A, B, C, D is a useful thing. And she looked at me like I was from another planet. I said, you know, he's been living all along without grades. And suddenly grades are here, how did that happen? She had no clue. It's 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 an accepted thing that it has to happen. She did, she did struggle, and then he said, well, that's feedback. And I said, well, let's test that theory. I'm gonna give you a test with ten questions on it. And you're done with the test, I'm gonna give you the feedback, you got a seven, that's average. How's that for feedback? She said, well, you didn't give me the test back or tell me what I did wrong. I said, I gave you the grade, you tell me the grade was the feedback. She still didn't get it. Didn't tell me how things ended up, I know man, it's really feedback. And it looks different, I'm gonna processes and procedures that I assume in a state organization. Picture the individuals, pervertate, pasty, pasty, pasty. And the interactions, studies and trip days and et cetera. And as soon as you look at that. You you have to, it's it's impossible not to recognize that if you're working on improving the individuals, you're working uh with no leverage at all. If you improve the interactions, there are so many more interactions, but not individuals. And looking at the interactions and improving them is a huge force that the client can make things better.
Yeah, I I've been teaching that for years and I think I think the way it's presented in the book is kind of overwhelming. The way I teach it is there's A and B that run a company. And they get ninety percent of everything done. So they add C, who can obviously do the ten percent, and everything got worse, why? Well, when you just had A and B, you just had one interaction. When you add C, how many interactions you have, and it's seven. So A to B, A to C, B to C. Then you have A, B, and C all interacting as unique, and then you have A interacting with B, C. And I and I like to say, do do you have two people that you get along with each person individually? But when those two get together and they're thinking the same, you don't get along with them at all, that's A, B, C. A, B, C, and then C, A, B, so there's seven interactions. So then I say, how many of the seven interactions is C involved in? And it's six. So if C is not good at interacting with people, you just, you had A and B get ninety percent done. When you added C, you just made six of the seven possible interactions negative, and that's why all of a sudden you're getting fifty percent done. And I think with lesser numbers, I mean, when you do the numbers, they get outrageous. But just to do it with three, I've noticed that people get that right away, like, wow. Adding one person who doesn't know how to interact with other people wrecks everything, because they're six of the seven interactions.
So John, that made it sound like it sees fault. But I I don't, I don't think that's what you're necessarily implying, is it?
I I'm not, and that's where I always get into things with people about these, you know, PKIs. And you guys were discussing this last time about these, you know, how do you in an organization do that? It's always the interaction. Like with with that football team. What happens is is an outside linebacker needs to fit with a defensive end and an inside linebacker. So you could have the best outside linebacker in the world, but the coach, what I taught him is you don't play him if he doesn't fit with, you know, interact well with these two. So the key isn't how good I am. The key is is how well I interact, because all the profitability is in the exchange, the profitability is not in the person. It's in the exchange, and that's why if six of the seven interactions are unprofitable, then how do we improve the interaction? Not how do we improve the person, how do we improve the interaction? It might be that A and B need to learn how to interact with C better, and that gets back to understanding people.
What's interesting about that, it's true, mechanistic systems too. Back in the day, you'd be probably late sixties, early seventies. Ford took apart, got tore out of the engine, they measured all the, all the parts. Surface stations, diameters, whatever they were. And they did the same thing with the Ford engine. And they said, the Ford parts are dead. And they all agreed, they tore out the engine for families they stayed. And the lie is, the Toyota parts worked together, the interactions they got in. But the parts individually were not. And in the social system, I don't think there's any other way, I think looking at the pieces is happiness. I always worry about every time they clear the heat line, I was a nice dog in a fire, and he caught a shock there. You take the chance for a state game. Because it comes a huge, like, the causes you can win the game. And when you don't win, there must be a state that the cause of you that is. I hate that, these little stuff. I remember great interaction. Because I must send my family, I'm gonna do your hands. And it's Germany and Brazil, not the last time they played in the World Cup. But in two thousand and two, the last time they say, um levelino, and we're all there, pretty talented players on this here. And the pass was made, I know, round. Nice, sharp pass, parallel to the exit, two dots, about nineteen eyes on it. And levelino ran onto it. And he took the step back, and I think he was gonna crack that shot, and nobody'd be able to stop. And the defender that was between levelino and Ranada saw him heading for the box. And ran to block that shot, that level in a fate. And I go to Ranada, he stayed. That's, and 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 you know on the stat sheet, Ranada gets in credit. Levelino doesn't get the assist, he didn't touch the gun. And because he pretended it shouldn't, he created a space for Ranada. His pregnant reason was still happening.
And there's the fallacy of the stat sheet or the PKI or all that stuff that's gonna value the individual and and tell me exactly what you did, and it's like, it's not gonna show up in the stat sheet.
I love that, when I saw the coach reminded us some days. It it was really clever, he said, you know, guys. The twenty two guys on the field, the game's ninety minutes, so I'm happy. The boys at your feet, ten minutes. I don't even know what you're doing the other eighty six, because that's how we're gonna win. So just like the orchestra, are you playing to help the others in the orchestra? Are you playing the PSA?
Or if you think about the role of of like the cymbal player. Like, they they have like, you know, three notes in the entire, the entire thing.
And this chapter introduces the P D S A cycle.
But but wait, before before we move on, I I just wanna go over one other thing. And and I think it'd be a good discussion here, um, because Demi, Demi uses the term interaction. Um, and uh, interaction, um, oftentimes, depending on your view, can lead is has its roots in processes versus interrelationships, which has the root in people. And um, I I like to, there's like to have people's comments on it, because he he focuses on interactions. And um, interrelationships are different than uh obviously a mechanistic uh interaction type of view, so I'd like to hear everyone's view on on that before we go into um, uh, the P D S A cycle.
Well, I I think that's a really great observation, because interaction is definitely mechanistic. It's just task, to me, it's just task by task, event by event, whereas interrelationship is um, and and I hear Bill talk about this all the time, is when when I do something and I hand it off, I don't care anymore if it's interaction, if it's in a relationship. I still care about this, and so there's still this opportunity to to, I'm not gonna do it just so it's acceptable, I'm gonna do it so it's desirable, because I I have this relationship with this other person. So I think that's a really good observation, interaction by definition is is mechan mechanistic.
Yeah, and so in that, and so a lot of what he talks about is interaction. He he does obviously talk about people in interacting, but I think there's a difference between an inner relationship and and interaction. Um, and so I just wanted to, before we moved on, uh, because those first three or four pages, you know, he was talking about management or mismanagement and so forth, and I wanna make sure that we we touched on that before we moved on.
Does he talk about interrelationship anywhere in here? Is it all, like, I'm just looking at like interaction, interaction, interaction?
I don't know.
I think about this when it applies, like, when we think about like systems thinking. And that it's not just about the components and the individual parts, but it's about the interactions between the parts or among the parts, right? Um, and that that being the the more important aspect that contributes to the system.
But I think, I think one of the things here, and again, Bill and I have been talking about this, and he's been sharing this on on the the Deming channel a lot. That is, is that it's very one dimensional, just to say, acceptability. I I had a good interaction, check, you know, whereas desirability kind of makes this more two dimensional. And so it's not enough that I got within the constraints, it's like there's an optimum, and and he always talks about Taguchi and the loss function, it's like there's a desirable response, and that's more than just an interaction. I I feel like Deming, when he can't get more than one dimensional, he just kind of stays in his lane and says this, but later in the book, he starts implying, you know, if we really valued each other and we really understood each other, then it would, we would all win this way, we'd all, like, he implies it, not in this chapter, but later in this book. But i- in this, in this chapter, it is one dimensional mechanistic. And in a system, you can sit there and say, it's a product of the interactions, but but the the interactions can become more desirable and richer and and really truly win, win, win all around if we we have more of a relationship. That's where Bill's like, when he teaches his class, he says, how do you optimize the system? And and they say it's all optimized, and then Bill's like, well, what about that guy when he goes home to his family? Like, i- isn't there a human component to optimizing the system? Isn't there a human component? Like, when I drop, you know, if I pass something off to Dennis, there's one way to do it. I I could pass it off a lot of different ways. Because we can be interpersonal and and we can give each other energy. So the thing is, is there's more than just a mechanistic measure, the piece and what actually happened that you can optimize the system. If you if you cut out the people, then it's just optimize the interactions. But like Bill says, he always gets his students, when they say the system's optimized, he's like, it's never optimized. Because we're people, there's this other component. And these people did all these great things at work, and did it end up in all these divorces at home? Is that really profitable? Is that really optimized?
Or even at work, you know, you can, you know, I can interact with someone, you know. The operation guy interacts with the 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 finance guy, they interact on a on a very good level. But behind the scenes, there they could be competitive, there could be all this other stuff from an interrelationship that is going on. So from the interaction, it looks like, yeah, hey, I I'm I'm all with it, let's go ahead and do that. And there could be so many other things of support or sabotage that the relationship really comes into to play a lot into it.
And that's what I mean by later, and he, or it's like, that is the the thing is, is we shouldn't be competing. We're all on the same team. We're all on the same team. But now we're getting to relationships. I I agree with that.
Yeah. And you know, the system is the bigger system. It's not what you have your system in mind and so forth. But I just wanted to make sure that before we moved on, we talked about that and we were aware of that because that will play into other parts as as we go go through.
Yeah, cause I don't think I really ever really think about it or have thought about it as like interrelationships. So I mean, even Deming here is talking about interactions, but in the sense that they can be negative or zero interactions and that we're trying to move them to be positive interactions. Which to me, it still feels again, not really having thought about inner relationships, but um, but moving in the right direction, like we're we're aiming for more positive interactions. Uh, trying to get say towards a a higher value of the loss or a lower value of the loss function? I don't know, minimizing the loss.
One kind of action that you characterize in a system, depending on the interaction, as an inner dependency. So maybe what we really like to do is include the functioning of the inner dependencies. So my hearts are dominating my my heart is dominating my brain and lungs. And my brain is dominating my heart, you know, but they're working together and they need that.
But you know, getting back with Rob said, going from negative to positive, is that acceptable? That's just acceptable. Versus desirable would be, okay. I I don't care if it's positive, how, what's the optimal positive? How do we drive it forward? And so that's where I'm like agreeing with Dennis on this is like, he is saying interactions and I think he's he is consistent with interactions. But later in the book, I think you'd look back and go, he's really shooting towards interrelationship, but I don't think he can explain it here.
Yeah, I think I think SOPK gets, especially with the psychology component, gets deeper into the interrelationship. Um, you know, here in this book, you know, he he doesn't have SOPK you know, fully fleshed out and that comes later. Uh, but you know, one quarter of SOPK is on the psychology. And you know, that's obviously plays into this part.
So Deming doesn't really believe in quote dust. He believes in that. And certainly, positive is better than negative. I don't think anything that leaves positive is denying. It can be done.
Continual improvement.
Yep. I think the interaction and the dependency in a relationship.
Now, as as we, when we move to the PDSA cycle, um, I found, you know, I've I've gone through this a zillion times, but there's the uh, the explanation on on uh, the Deming Institute of the the two authors that go into and explain it. I I don't have their names. But uh, you know, I think that'd be a good thing to share with this group, uh, because that really um, went through the evolution um, outside of of what's presented here, um, from a a the PDSA and and what it means. And does anyone have remember those two authors that did it that are is on the Deming Institute? Could be. See if I can find it. Anyway, but I think that 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 goes right into the short cycle then.
No, I can tell you, I lived this the first ten times, maybe more. I never noticed they probably shooting like a cycling. I'd always been taught that there's a negative and key processes. He says it's a cycle for learning. And I feel those epiphanies. You know, I get my, yeah, my my fist and say, duh. My dogs, brain, they're blowing up. Trying to state that it fits. And my gosh, you're out of your training, you guys, it was using, I haven't studied that. And some of the times during the due, you got feedback that affected how you handled the next time you tried things.
I I think, um, when I, cause I work with athletes and and I I teach about the brain and I think um, one of the things that people miss in in life that I think the PDSA covers is you have to have an intention before you do something. So I'll work with a basketball player and he'll get hot. And he'll he'll just make a bunch of shots. And then it's like, well, he wants to do that again. And it's like, well, what were you trying to do before you got hot? Well, I don't know. Well, then how do we get you in that mode again? So one of the things that's really, really key is to really have an intention of what you're doing. I help. I my company is called FlowSess. I help uh, athletes and people get in the flow. And there's a process for getting in the flow and everybody's is unique. But the thing is, is that you can't just get into flow. So everybody's process is you were trying to do something and then this happened, you know, this guy got mad at this ref and all of a sudden he makes four threes in a row. Well, guess what part of his process is is getting mad? He he wants to just like, why am I not getting in flow? Like because, you know, you're you're not getting mad. I don't know if any of you are basketball fans, but Tyrese Halliburton, do you know who that is?
Yes, unfortunately.
Yeah, he's he's from Oshkosh. I I was in his school. I I was um, visiting that school and I taught him his process for flow. When he was a high school player and I told him, I said, I said, cause I've watched him play. My son was playing basketball against him. And I said, and you can see him do it now, is he will, he will cross half court and dribble the ball between his legs, stepping forward, then dribble the ball, then his legs stepping back. And it's kind of like draw him out and he just can't miss. His team couldn't make a basket his junior year. They were undefeated. Couldn't make a basket in the regionals because the coach added an extra thought to everything. And then when we went through everything, his senior year, it was like, this is your process for flow. You you start here and you go there and they won the state finals. So that's the thing. It's like, what were you trying to do? When everything went, when when everything happened, what were you trying to do? I don't know. And I think the plan, you know, the PDSA is like, that's like the first step, like what is it we're trying to do? And so I think people get a benefit of this, but in real life, we should be applying this to real life. So many times things happen for us. And then in order to replicate it, you gotta go back to what we were trying to do, get in that same mindset and do it. And if we don't know what we're trying to do, you can't just do the effect. It's it is a process. So I, when I look at this, I always think, man, this is something I was teaching people in real life. Not knowing that there was this actual step by step for for the lab in a sense.
Good story.
Also, that is that they don't take places. And if they done it in Brazil, they do PDCA, they call it. They use the C for chat that Deming wasn't happy with. They think they're doing a the dummy cycle, the shoe high cycle. That they're using chat. And and they use it as a program manager, they pay. They gotta got it, they got it, they gotta do the part, they got the goal, they gotta take action. He said, holy cow, you're USA, I make benefits. You you did it, you did it, say, don't you know it? Not to be the program that is YouTube. It's a very limited application. Probably this application, USA.
And I think that's the big distinction with with lean. Lean uses the the C and they don't get into the learning mode as much as using the 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 Deming cycle. And it and it is, uh, Ron Moan. If you have a chance to go on the Deming uh, institute site, it really, a really good uh, uh, explanation. So I would recommend that to everyone.
And if you haven't seen too, the the paper on the API sites, which is like Ron and Cliff is the other.
Yeah.
But the the whole history of and relating like where did PDSA come from and all that? Yeah.
Yeah, it it's it's really good and it's unfortunate that the the whole lean effort has missed that and um, so many people think they understand it, but uh, you know, they they don't even understand the origins, let alone uh, the differences between the two.
So it's a distinction that that you all are making, um, is that the the check is is more superfluous? Like, it's really just like, did we pass, pass or fail? And then move back to the beginning. So the, you're not getting the quality of learning that one should get or one could get if one was to truly study the results and in the findings.
Yeah, it's not just the results. It's studying what kind of creating, they do, you study everything.
Yeah, the whole process, right?
Yeah.
And and I and I talk to to people, I say, you know, one will help you solve a problem, PDCA. Um, but the PDSA helps you think about it and you can also get, not only solve a problem, but you can get into um, creating in inventions. You can, you can go beyond that. So um, you you know, instead of just removing waste or solving a problem, PDSA, you know, by studying, you can then get into different different avenues, um, and invention comes out of that.
You mentioned getting rid of waste. I always found it fascinating that we use them for waste in organization, frequently with fat. We gotta cut out the fat. And I said, have you ever seen a skinny whale? The fat is not waste on a whale.
Nor is it on a cow.
True, on anybody. I mean, you can be overweight for certain. That divided, it requires that something kind of waste, they want to eliminate it. It's the same thing with variation, calling it the terrible thing that I eliminated. And Bill is careful to talk about managing the variation. You're always gonna have it, you're gonna manage it. You're always gonna have fun, you thought you have to have it, it's unnecessary, you have to manage it. It's not about making everything so. Might make it a million fish and whatever, it's skinny, but you wouldn't ask for it. I also found out, I stopped it a few times. That maybe I was stupid in the most people. If Deming is talking about divided responsibility, told us a story. And then says, the reader wrote the seed at once, the size of the problem, two signatures. This idiot did not deceive immediately, this size of the problem.
I I love your line that that line, cause I love that. Let me see the card. Let me see the card. It's like, there it is.
Yes, I was gonna say, I feel like I've heard stories of Deming at uh, maybe at times at GM where nobody could find like where where the special cause was or something and and he just grabs the control chart. Two minutes later, you you know what the issue is? I don't, I was hoping one of you two would be there. And then I'd get the real story and I'd have it ready for the next time.
I I didn't have that experience.
Yeah, I can't, I can't, Deming late to get my daughter. I was in the total quality management office in Rockaway. And I got there about six months. And part of the reason I got there is I grabbed the economics and I used that to go to the organization, the kind of, I think, that I own this nation. But then Deming died about eight months later and said, I never got to help him. Got to open the eye of people, they're kidding. I gypsy, I hate it. And others. I found it interesting. And then he talks about, and there's this thing, teaching. And what it teaches is what I'm doing my last fifty, eighty years, whatever the numbers. And I, and I, yes, I had recognized you know, they're doing, and I have this thing. It is, we're teaching nothing, no, nothing in the past. And I've been to do better in the future. And I'm not teaching anything, I'm not doing to try to get better in the future. You're understanding, getting them to learn everything that guys to know we are. You're doing nothing to help them learn to get us somewhere other than letting them.
I think that's a a uh, classic uh, way of looking at education. Undergrad is for teaching what we know now. And in graduate school and PhD programs, you learn how to discover the future. But we're we're missing the fact that you need to be able to identify the future in business too. And uh, so I think you're right on the money with that ob- observation, Tim. And it's just uh, the nature of how things are set up now. That's that's the way it is.
Yes. The education system, when I was, I think I said it last time, right? When I got trained to be a teacher, they taught me how to work with a decade. Cause my job is to deliver correctly. The kind of fact, I mean, I said, anything to do with the fact they did by honey.
Right. My in the, my experience in school is actually the the goal is to determine who's the smartest. So they intentionally make it tougher to learn. And um, what I did and and I end up seeing hurt learning later, ACOF did it, but I would go in and they would give me a student that was a year behind or or further behind testing behind, and I would catch him up in two months. And the way I did it was I had them teach me. So ACOF, you learn three times quicker when you teach rather than to learn. So the whole key to learning is teaching. And and so that's the thing is like, if they really wanted to, the kids to learn, they would teach each other. And so you guys were saying pre-industrial revolution. These kids were in a schoolhouse and they all taught each other. There was one teacher there, but they were teaching each other. So they were all learning. There was no need for grades cause everybody's learning. But when we're trying to figure out who's the smartest, then we make learning tough so that we can spread them out and then we could grade them. But if we really wanted kids to learn, we'd have the kids teaching each other.
Can you say that again? Uh, uh, you were you were garbled there.
Oh, I'm sorry. I found out the kids are learning, and I was learning something. They just know, you know, and I was teaching. Unfortunately, I suffered from the difficulty that I didn't think they needed to learn. Some of the things I was teaching. When I taught English, I could teach them grammar. Because I was teaching people to write. And no matter how good you are at grammar, you don't, you write a paragraph. And this department, she didn't mind. And he said, I heard you're not teaching grammar. I said, yeah, I'm busy, I'm trying to teach them to write. And he said, there was a high correlation between people who like well and people who are good at grammar. And I said, that makes pretty sense. And he said, so you're gonna start teaching grammar? I said, yeah, I'm gonna teach it tonight. Because grammar's an explanation of the child that you're getting. So if you learn the right, grammar's gonna get down automatically. It doesn't change.
So how did that conversation end, Tim?
That ended, that ended. With him staying out of my room, leaving me alone. So I don't know, I'm getting out.
Very good.
My first favorite, either guys know. That they handed me a test. I think it was soft now. Image. And they told me this test three days later. To help me understand that each kid did and table that is doing to each kid's needs. So they denied it. I said, ah, and then three days, that's a lot of days to test it. And then to see if I worked, that could be three days, I didn't have it for the semester. Since there are six days, it is tested thing. So I started the kids on the third day, and they're tested, they're gonna do. You got the fifth example that I examine this test, it shows you what they need and how to take the test. As I read, reading that first question, I wasn't convinced that their answer was correct. And that's, I was confident, I didn't care if a sixty year old didn't answer to it. So they got on and took the test the first day. On the second day, when they came in, they said, what about the test? And I said, we're not doing that, I just put it down the shelf. And then the head of the department, I said, I heard you didn't give me the test. And I said, yeah, they tell you it's gonna be this thing, it's useless. And he said, you can't do that. I said, what do you mean? Said, they're not giving the test, and then they keep talking about how bad it is. I said, I'm not doing that. So then they, then the the curriculum development at the school district. It didn't have the energy to concede, I was starting eyes away, take courage. And about six minutes into the conversation, he says, god damn it. If you weren't so arrogant, you'd find a use for this test. And I tell you, Larry, those are two separate issues. I'm arrogant and I have no use for this test because it sucks. And you don't have enough to learn. But besides this problem, you didn't give me a soft no English class to teach. The only classes, classes that were taken at this soft no English, they didn't have freshman English class to teach you.
Now, I think one of the things that SOP K and and education really clarified for me was that. You have students are the people working within the system. And then you have educators, teachers, so forth, working on. The system, and I think there's a difference between the two and we we tend to think that. Or the current system, you know, has it that the leaders, the 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 teachers are the ones that are working. In the system and they're not, the students are the ones that are working in the system, so I think. That's one of the things that SOP K really drew out for me. That distinction between the two, because we always think that teachers are the, you know, all important, omniscient and so forth. But it's it's actually the students working in the system, which is, and then they collaborate together with that feedback and so forth and so on.
Yes.
Yes, speaking of the collaboration, it's news I figured out when I was teaching. Collaboration is something any teacher wanted to do. And then I heard Sengay giving a talk to four hundred teachers. Maybe thirty years later. And he was talking to me about the fact. That their approach to education. Didn't offer an opportunity, that those students stay under anything. And if they cooperate, they might be able to do more and better things for the kids. And he got sort of the response, he was, you don't, you don't understand, Peter. And my clothes are going to my classroom, I'm not in his universe. So, I think everybody is after his God, and he's here because he's not the only.
Yeah, and Sengay really, he really stressed. The the concept of systems thinking, but couple that with team learning, that was a big thing and. And Mike, you you know how that works with with Toyota and other places, that that. Systems and team learning are so so crucial. And having that shared vision working, you know, Sengay was really, you know, in the nineties, that was. Really a seminal book that he put together. That really dovetails and works well with with Deming's work.
Agreed.
But so going back to to the book, what ought a school of business teach? I think that would, you know, in fifteen minutes, I think that would be a good discussion. What ought a school of business teach? I mean, he obviously goes through it, but it's, you know, all of us have have worked either, you know, in teaching or in business, what? I think that's just a, what ought a school of business teach? It's on page ninety nine in the book, I don't know what it is in Kindle, that type of thing. It's at forty-two percent of the chapter.
Oh, Mike, if if it could only be so simple. Because I am on Kindle and it is forty-six percent and it is page ninety-eight, so.
Ninety-eight, ninety-nine, it's close, it's close.
That's right, yeah, right.
Yeah, I. I feel incompetent to decide a school of business how to teach. I have zero business experience, except I didn't work in a business. I mean, look, I don't know. Doesn't exactly the business school system, three years. I worked for Rockerdyne for twenty-nine, and then working for Massive for fifteen. So two of the organizations I worked for. Young profit-making institutions. Say. Even the inside, as little as it is. As a person. You're not sure, I'm gonna watch this thing, you're gonna. Like, does this student kinda teach?
I think I have a pretty unique experience relative to this question. So I was running a company, cleaning systems, it was a. Detergent company that, car wash detergent company that had forty-five distributors. And one of these distributors went to college. The other forty-four did not go to college, and they all had businesses that ranged from five to fifteen million dollars. So these are guys who did not learn business, they kind of fell into. A distributorship that suddenly took off with touch-free cleaning. And it was my job for two years to travel the country and teach these guys business, basically. And being a modeler, what I noticed is that. Hiring and training. Like, if I was gonna teach, if I had a business company, first thing I would do is I'd teach. Teach people how to hire and how to train, because that's your people are everything. And if you don't know how to hire, you're wasting a lot of money, I saw a lot of guys waste money because they didn't hire right, and then they hire right and they didn't train. So hiring, training, and and then. Running, you know, basically learning how to account for your profitability. These guys thought they were making money on their equipment. And I sat there and would go through them and show them where they're making their money and show them they were actually making their money on our chemical. And so a lot of these guys had no background on like really deciding where your money is being made and doing that. And then. Seventy-five percent of the time that I met with these guys to do business training, I was helping them with their kids. Their marriage and their parents and their friends, and most of these guys had had relatives in the business. So it was teaching these guys how to go to Thanksgiving dinner and not end up in a big fight. Because you're sitting at Thanksgiving dinner, is this personal or is this professional? It's like, I'd have them all watch The Godfather, The The Godfather, every line in there, is this business or personal? And it's like, you're sitting at Thanksgiving dinner with your family, you think it's a personal thing and you start talking business and then. Everybody got their business hat on, half the people do, half the people don't. There's a fight. And so literally learning how, do you know how to switch gears between business and professional? And I, work-life balance isn't fifty-fifty, work-life balance is when you're at work. Think about work and don't think about your personal life, and you, when you're home, think about home and don't think about work. And that's where COVID caused, like, a lot of the advice I give people with COVID is. Pick a room in your house that's your office when they ended up remote working. Pick a room, work in that room, and at the end of the day, lock that room because you needed to have some distance. A lot of these kids in middle school and high school, they were taking class in their bedroom. And then they couldn't sleep. Because the bedroom was no longer a place for sleep, it was the place for, they were at school, and they they literally had problems sleeping. So to me, those would be kind of like the basics that that I learned, that I would actually teach. In a business school, because it's it, you you really can't run a business if you don't do those things. You can teach all the others stuff, but I, it's funny, when I I dealt with a lot of MBAs in 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 my business. And the biggest issue I had with the MBA program. Is if we are all in MBA class right now. We, every, every example, every program we ever do is, we all own a hotel chain. And we all have the same market share. And in the same city, and we all have exactly the same budget. So what do we do? How many times does that happen in the real world? And when I worked on Purex for Dial, I had a, I had a brand manager who went to Kellogg. And really smart MBA, everything. And when when I was on Purex, I said, I said to him, I said, listen, I can make Purex. This much better for the same cost. Or I can make Purex the same at this much less cost, and he was like. We never had that example in MBA class at Kellogg. We never had an example where, oh, by the way, there's a technological breakthrough that you have that your customers don't have, what would you do with it? Never happened. And he was smart enough to go. I want it, this, how much can you make it and save me this amount of money? Me not knowing what he did, I did that. He used the extra money to coupon in the Great Lakes Northeast, which is where liquid detergents sell. We sold, he did that, we put on the new Purex, we became number one. In those seventeen IRI markets in the United States, pushed out Procter and Gamble. But it was, it was, it it was a case that was was, you know, shared and and talked about in these conferences. But it was a case that would never happen in a business school.
So, so John, you have, what I heard you say, we have. Hiring and training. Are those the two big ones? What else?
Hiring and training, like the those first two is is like.
Yeah.
It's where you, if you don't do, I saw so many businesses just fall apart because they couldn't hire the right people, or if they hired the right people, they couldn't make them better. And then knowing where your money's going. Like, do you know where your money's actually going? Do you, you know, do you have a personal budget? I mean, I do that, I help people budget their time and their money. If you can't account for every cent, you don't know where your money's going. If you can't count for every fifteen-minute interval, you don't know where your time's going, so. So knowing where your money, where are you actually making your money? Do you know where you are really making your money? A lot of these guys didn't do it, and then it was all the interpersonal, like, all my time was. Teaching them interpersonal stuff, it's amazing, like, I don't think people need a lot of traditional business. Classwork. Like, like, these guys didn't go to college and they knew, you know, how to. You know, do these different things that that they, you know, how to set appointments, how to manage your time, how to, you know, do all these different things. In business and how to in inter, you know, deal with advertising, deal with marketing, deal, they all knew that, these guys didn't even go to college and they knew it. But they didn't know how to deal with people. They didn't know how to hire, train, and account for where their money is, and to me, it's like, when I don't see a business school cover those things.
Okay.
I'm shocked.
Yeah.
How does a business school, though? How does a business school? I have trouble believing that a business school would be able to help me learn how to hire better.
Why?
Why not? Yeah, why not? Rob?
I'm I mostly think, I I'm definitely biased by my business school experience.
Where where'd you go, by the way?
I went to BU.
Okay.
So Boston University, you know, and it was, I I think for the time, I mean, well, it seemed. It it seems in line actually with kind of, I don't know, some of the things that at least resonate for me in this. This chapter about some of these things, that it's a lot about teaching kind of, I don't know, business components that I've seen. In work and re, like, in in some, and then some of the, you know, like MBOs, things like that. That didn't feel right at the time, and now now we have some words to put behind why they didn't really feel right then. Anyways, I just have, I I think to the 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 few professors that I remember, I have trouble seeing. Yeah, seeing them make a a big improvement, at least in the software hiring space. Because I I see a lot of hiring that happens based on similar things, so it's based on tools. And and what skills I already know, as opposed to the other component you were talking about, John, was just the learning. And and I think some of the things that at least I've read about. Implications around, say, Toyota, like, it doesn't necessarily matter, I think, what what things you have learned. Because they're gonna train you.
They'll develop, they'll develop you, and and Mike talked about that, but you know, one of the things that, you know, that that I've seen in business schools that. But, you know, one of the things that, you know, that I've seen in business schools, that the better schools are, they're getting away from those individual use software, only because things are gonna change in a year or two. So, oh, yeah, I'm gonna learn about, you know, AI. Well, two years, we got Gen AI, and then so forth and so on. You can master something, and, and then all of a sudden, you know, it's gonna change. So business schools having to get away from those specifics, and getting more into these, as John was saying, into these how to deal with people type issues, and, and how do, how do you interact that way? Mike, what do you think?
Just, just a comment, I mean, I think that that makes sense to me as well. And I think I'm, I am sort of over-relating my own bias of what I would expect to the business professors that I dealt with to tell me today, and they might not tell me that today, right?
But so, just to, just to finish.
Many, many years to learn along the way, so.
I, I just want to throw one thing in. So, so when you're hiring somebody, what are you looking for when you hire them? Are you looking for basic skills, like they can do this, they can do that, they can do this?
It depends on what you're hiring for.
It is, it does. But here's the thing, we're all sitting here talking about systems. What's the number one thing you should be hiring for?
Interrelationships, right?
Fit. Are they gonna fit? Yeah, are they gonna fit?
But that's not what you're gonna learn at business school.
And it gets into the system. How do they fit in a system, you know? I, I have so many, I shouldn't say battles, but going back and forth with companies wanting to hire those Six Sigma people. They, you know, they get them in, and they don't, they don't fit within a Deming or Lean or other things. But, you know, oh, we have to have the Six Sigma, and so it's, you need the discipline, but, you know, how do they fit in? So those are just things that you have to look at. Mike, were you gonna say something?
Well, I was gonna, in terms of what would I think a school of business should do, and what should they teach? I'm looking at the list that Deming provided, and it's basically a harangue against what they don't teach. It's not, this was not, this was almost spiteful, the way he wrote this, it seems like. They ought to teach the theory of a system and the theory of profound knowledge. They ought to teach the damage unmeasurable that comes from the evils of short-term thinking.
You think he had an opinion?
And I think he was fired up when he wrote this.
Yeah. So, so it's interesting. I did go to business school as well, and I did go to Kellogg, so don't hold that against me. John?
I have a great impression of Kellogg. This guy thought on his feet, and he taught me something, so I thought that was amazing.
And I, I was there, I was on the GM Fellowship. They paid for me to go there. I signed a contract that I'd go back, so I could take whatever I wanted. I ended up doing a triple major because I was interested in a lot of things. But I do remember one class, I can't remember the title of the class. But it was about interrelationships, people, and it talked about cultures, and it talked about international business, and how, you know, the one example I remember was these guys from Great Britain went to a meeting with their new potential partners in Brazil. They flew down there, and it was a two o'clock meeting, and they showed up at one forty-five, and they weren't there at two, they weren't there at two fifteen, and they left the room at two twenty disgusted. And the people showed up two thirty, two forty, and where, where is everybody? What, I thought we had a meeting today. They just, you know, just, you gotta learn about social norms, and don't assume everybody's like you. So there were some, some good, good things that I learned there. The, the one class that I probably learned the most about, that came to be most useful for me, I didn't take a multiple linear regression class in business school, so. But I remember a lot of the classes, a lot of the classes were set up, assuming you were gonna be CEO someday. So what's, what's the strategic implications, whatever, you know, it was high, highfalutin stuff, a lot of it.
And what, you know, getting back to the Kellogg, one of the things, also, I have a relationship with Kellogg School there at Northwestern. But there was, one of the professors was from Toyota, Mike, and he was relating, and we had, we were talking about a case where operations, he considered operations to be a black box. In, in that, accounting was not involved in the operations. So you had, operations would work, and they would solve problems, they would develop people, and they would all work within, within the operations. And above that was the financials of it, because they didn't want, you know, someone from accounting to say, you spent too much on this, or you, you, you did that, that was, they kept the accounting out of it so that they could focus on, focus on developing people, and focus on process improvements and, and those type of things. So that was just a very interesting thing, again, more of an international flavor that you don't get oftentimes with, with other programs.
Yeah.
But the black box was just, you know, it was, it, it really opens your eyes to, okay, you know, this area, they're gonna be, they're just gonna do what they do. We're not gonna, you know, create problems with this finances. And so that was just a very interesting that relates to so many other things.
Yeah, interesting.
So, Mr. Tim?
Yes.
How are we doing on time?
We've hit the witching hour. We can continue at least until six o'clock, or we can say, one hour, and then get ready for next week. I did it, although I enjoyed the conversations.
Well, let's see how you handle this interrelationship part of, of this call here. So let's see how you handle this. What's next, Tim?
About next week with the red beads. I think I sent out I did, I think I sent out a thirty minute video of Demi doing the red beads. You guys have probably already seen it. I didn't have seen Demi did. So I think that's what's on the schedule for next week, is it not?
Yeah, yeah, it is. And you sent us that video earlier. Yeah, and, you know, I know, I'm always a willing worker, so, you know.
Well, very good conversation this evening.
Yeah, very informative. Thank you for the thoughts.
Thank you, guys. This was great.
Wait, wait, before we go, so John, you're gonna be there at, in three weeks, right, at the end to? Tim, I mean, Rob, you're gonna be there?
Yep.
Mike?
Yes, I am.
Okay, me too. Tim?
Yeah.
All right. So we'll, we'll see everyone there. We have obviously sessions in between, but we know we'll see everyone there in person, so that'd be good.
You guys are real people.
No, 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 no.
And I get the sense, too, that Bill will also be there. Although, is he still improving just fine after his surgery? Good?
Yes, very good.
Awesome.
But don't they use their in the same locale, right? All right, have a good night.
All right.